Okay, this is the planning board meeting of June 18, 2024. It's the pleasure of the board.
I make a motion we set the meeting minutes from our 5:13, 2024. Do we need to do that one or just the 6:04?
No, I'd do that one.
You have to do that one too?
Yep.
That was the meeting upstairs.
That was the visioning session.
Ah, the meeting, our meeting of 6:04, June 4, 2024.
I'll second.
We're moved in second and we approved the minutes of 6:24, 6:04:24. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And Mr. Four?
So you want to do 5:13?
5:13. That's the meeting up we had upstairs.
Yeah, I'll move to approve the meeting of the 13th.
I'll second.
We're moved in second to approve the minutes, meeting minutes of 5:13:24, the joint meeting. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll abstain babe, just, you have three anyways.
Three in favor, one abstention. Okay, we're going into the joint meeting with the, for the Ad hoc Comprehensive Plan Committee. I have representatives from the ACP here.
Yeah, shall I take it away?
You take it. You're in control.
All right, well hello everyone, it's so nice to see you today. I'm sorry that Josh and Courtney couldn't come, they were very sorry actually that they couldn't come today, but my name's Camille Johnlin. I'm an economic development planner at the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, so I'm working on the economic development in downtown sections of your comprehensive plan. So we're going to be talking about that today, but I'd like to introduce Zoe as well who's here this evening.
Hi everyone, I'm Zoe Accavino, I'm a regional planning data analyst and I've been doing all of the data analysis and mapping for the comprehensive plan, supporting my fellow planners with our existing conditions analysis, so very excited to be here this evening.
Yeah, so all data questions you can ask Zoe in detail, she knows. Great, all right, so let's start advancing, yeah, she's going to advance the slides for me with our tech setup. So the agenda for today, I'm going to give you a short community engagement update, we do have some updates for you. We're going to talk about the vision statement, but since Josh and Courtney were unable to attend, we're going to let you talk about that next time. That said though, in your packets, you do have some example vision statements from other towns and we do want you to look at those and let Larry and Josh know what you think about them and if there's one that stands out to you. I think, I think there are several other towns that you can take a look at, so, so that's a next step for you all, but I'll skip past that and we'll talk about the economic development in downtown sections and then finish up with a few little next steps. So for our community engagement update, we are happy to announce that we have almost 350 responses to the survey, so great work everyone for getting the word out, we do still want you to keep getting the word out, I just put a flyer up at the library on their bulletin board, and so, you know, I think we want, we want more responses and we're going to be connecting with a few other channels as much as we can, that'll remain open through mid-July at least. And yeah, so far it's been through the schools, youth centers, senior center, Milford Patch, water department, others. So we actually, next week are doing a Community-Based Organization Immersion Day is what we're calling it, we're bringing together some of the community-based organizations, whether they're faith-based or youth-based or other kinds of organizations to talk about this plan with us, recognizing that it's hard to get all of the public to really know what's happening in planning processes, I'm sure you all know, so we're excited to work with these other organizations to hear their feedback and engage them. That's Tuesday, the 25th, 8:30 to 10:30, the locations, this community impact. So we're excited about that. All right, so just, yeah, mentioning here, I already said with the vision statement, you'll, you'll let Larry and Josh know your thoughts on that. And let's get into the more topical discussion, if you're all ready for it. So, here are plan topics, you're familiar with all these, you've seen all these. We, as we're working on our data analysis for all of these topics, we wanted to briefly ask you about the comparable municipalities. So when we do comprehensive plans, we like to use other municipalities as comparison points to see kind of the context, I mean, sometimes a raw data point just from Milford, like unemployment rate, you actually need to compare, right, to other places to know what that means. So, we are going to be comparing our data, depending on what the data is, to your neighbors like Bellingham, Holliston and others, but we're also, kind of a question for you here, we're also wondering which other places would be helpful for you to see as a comparison. So, we pulled out here some of the, what we call subregional urban centers, right, so like Milford, you know, places in the greater area that are economic centers or that draw people from around the area, like Beverly, like Gloucester, but we really pulled out Framingham as an example, given that they have a larger Brazilian, newer Brazilian community, we thought that was interesting. Marlborough was another potential one, since it's also on 495. Norwood, I mean, has a population very similar to yours actually, I think it was 31,000 in Norwood and they're a town, so, do any of these stand out to you as ones that you'd really like to see for comparison data?
Probably Marlborough.
Marlborough, yeah.
I think Framingham, Framingham might be quite a bit bigger.
It is, it's 70,000, yeah.
Eighty thousand, yeah?
Is it, yeah.
Just get to a city, it's been a town.
Yeah.
Going that far up, what about, I'm just thinking up 495, there's similarities, something, I have no idea what the population in Chelmsford is, but the, you know, with the old Apollo setups, there is a significant amount of businesses located there, they might be a little bit smaller than us, but that might be somewhat similar.
Yeah, okay, that sounds good, yeah, Marlborough is 41,000 I believe.
Yeah, it's going to be bigger than Milford, but at least it's within the...
Not too much. Yeah.
No, what's the...
Foxborough?
Brock.
Foxborough?
Foxborough, okay, yeah.
Hudson?
Hudson's way smaller. Yeah.
Okay, yeah, okay, good, great, thank you, just wanted a little flavor of what you thought, we're not going to do this for every data point, but just the ones that make sense. So if we continue on now, we'll really get into economic development in downtown, which I know that you are all excited about, I am, so, let's see. So starting with some, you know, general data and existing conditions in Milford, here are, I know it's a little hard to see, sorry about that, here are the largest employers in Milford, so, starting with Waters Corp at 1,500 employees, he's the largest by-employment here, and you see on the map, the larger the circle, the bigger the company is. Milton Cad and then the hospital at about 1,000 people, so those really stand out as the largest employers. If we go to the next slide, we see the largest industries, so by far, healthcare and education, I think you all knew that about healthcare, but after that, the trade, transportation, utilities and manufacturing and construction all have over 2,000 employees, so really significant big industrial sectors here. So here, I'm looking at employment and unemployment, Milford currently has an unemployment rate of 5.6%. So for, I gave a little context for this for you all, Framingham was at 5%, Massachusetts overall is at 5.3%, so Milford is just a touch higher than those other comparisons in unemployment. I know you saw this, this component on the right here in your past meeting with Audi and the transportation team, but it was interesting to see that over 15,000 people work in Milford but live elsewhere, so that is most of the people who work in Milford. We have about 17,573 employed in Milford as of 2021, so really a big chunk of them are coming in from elsewhere. And then, oh yeah, and then about 11,000 go from Milford, out of Milford to work, so, great. So then moving on to, we looked at the office and industrial and retail profiles of Milford, kind of get a picture of what's happening here commercially. So in the office market, you have an inventory of 2.6 million square feet and vacancy is at 5.7%. So this is overall for, for Milford in the past decade, pretty high vacancy of office, it's actually tied with Q2 of 2020, which I think everyone well remembers, 2020 of the highest vacancy of the past decade. So there is, there's 160,000 square feet of available space, that means space that's being marketed right now, and in terms of rent, it's, it's at around $23 a square foot, which is a historical high, but the growth rate of that is quite low. So, on the right here, you see a chart of the vacancy rate and, and it is pretty high office vacancy. Moving into industrial, there is a, this is a really different picture than office, I'll start with that. The inventory is 2.5 million square feet and a 0% vacancy rate, so this, this data's from CoStar, which is widely used for this kind of analysis, and that's, that's pretty amazing that there's 0% vacancy and no available space, so nothing marketed, none under construction. So wow, your space, your industrial space is being used.
That's, that's wrong.
Really? So...
They just, they just did a industrial thing at the old, in the granite, granite square, I think, they just did that over the Stop &amp; Shop, TJ Maxx and my, and whatever the other thing for TJ Maxx is.
Home Goods.
Home Goods, they did that over to an industrial thing and that fell through, so there's...
There's got to be...
50, 60,000 square feet there, maybe more.
The embryo battery went in there.
Yeah, we don't know what Kelly's doing with that though, he may not be marketing it actively for whatever reason, so it wouldn't show up.
Yeah, I think they're still looking for investors, so...
Right, so he, they may still be tied to the battery guy, but they, you know, so they can't actively market, so, I mean, that's how dynamic something like this is, I mean, it's tough to get the...
It's based on real estate deals?
Right, and that's what I'm saying, he may not be marketing that, we're not, we're not sure.
Okay, well, regardless, if it's, you know...
That's the only...
That's the only one, okay. So, and I, yeah, I included this, this map here on the right, I'm sorry, it is a little blurry, but in the purple is the industrial parcels of the greater Boston region, and why I put this here is that we recently did a report just last year from MAPC on, on the industrial trends in this greater Boston region, showing that there is disappearing industrial space, but very high demand for it. And so, we're seeing that industrial's an asset, and, you know, you all do have that space here in Milford, as shown, it's, it's on that, you know, little corner of the map there. So, just kind of uplifting that that asset is really here and maybe something that we can keep thinking about. So then, finally, on this kind of part of the presentation for retail, there is a 2.7 million square foot inventory, vacancy is at about 7.5%, which seems kind of steady actually, over time, available space 121,000 square feet, so there, there is more vacant space than is being marketed, which could be for a variety of reasons, and a $16 square foot asking rent growth, so, yeah. So, looking at Milford revenues, we see that the tax levy is 51% of Milford revenue, we see that state aid is around 30%, and then local receipts, enterprise funds and other stuff make up the rest of it. But really zooming into the tax levy here, the second pie chart on the right is showing that there is about 70% of the tax levy is from residential, and then 15% commercial, 9% industrial. So this is something that we'll, we'll maybe do some comparison municipalities, maybe look at Marlborough to see what different distributions are like. All right, so then, I wanted to end the economic development portion of this by kind of bringing it back to who is in Milford, because, you know, economic development is for the people, right, who live here and who want to live here and who work here, and so kind of just re-centering that about 30% of residents are people of color, 29% are youth, 28% living with a disability, 31% cost-burdened households and 35% speak languages other than English. So I know you all have seen this before, but just wanted to kind of bring that back as we go to this final slide here of the, the income by race and ethnicity, it was some interesting data. So there are two tables here, the one on the left is per capita income by race and ethnicity, so that's individuals and it's a mean, whereas on the right, it's household median income, so we kind of put both here because the data points are a little different, but tell a similar story. So looking at this table on the left of per capita income mean by race and ethnicity, for white folks, that's 50,000, and about, you know, less than half of that, 24,000 per capita income for black or African-American folks in Milford. I see that American Indian, Alaskan native is 23,000, Asian 51,000, so kind of actually a little bit higher than white. We see that, moving down to Hispanic or Latino, that's 26,000 was the per capita mean income, and then white alone, not Hispanic, is quite similar to white, it's about 50,000. So, it's just interesting to see that there are really these income-based race and ethnicity disparities that do exist here and of course in a lot of our region in the United States, so I just wanted to draw that out as an interesting point.
30% is a large number, does that include, I mean, is that just African-American or is it just...
For which point?
I mean, just...
Total minorities?
Uh, no, back there, the 30%.
People of, 30% residents are people of color?
That includes the whole spectrum of Spanish and...
Exactly.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, right.
African-American, okay.
Yeah, yeah, no, good question.
Okay.
So, from there, we're going to get into some of the discussion, so starting with these questions, I'm, I'm excited to hear your thoughts about what strikes you about this information, what should we focus on as we continue this analysis, what should be part of the long-term vision for economic development? And then finally, a question we can get to after about who we're, who we, who else we should talk to, so, so yeah, I'll give it back to you, what do you think about all this?
One of the things that, you know, in going through that, people have, people have talked about Milford being perhaps, and I don't know this, in somewhat of a unique position due to the demographics of the town, so it would be interesting if you, when you compare these, if you're comparing them to a Marlborough, maybe at this point a Framingham makes sense, and maybe a Franklin does, because I don't think, I don't think you're going to see the same demographics, but a lot of times, we're, you know, we look to where Milford is and what, what we're doing or not, and I don't think people understand the difference in the demographics of Milford compared to other towns, and I think in being able to develop this plan, and maybe I'm wrong, maybe that demographics is way different than I think and it's, it's not really there, but in, in that case, that's fine, but I think in developing the plan, if in fact the demographics are way more diverse in Milford than they are in neighboring towns, that's going to be important as to how we move forward with the plan.
Yeah. I guess I could actually give some other prompts for kind of, if you go to the next slide, here's some additional topic areas that we thought might be of interest that we haven't yet dove into, so, one of them is the services for business support or workforce support, I mean, it was, you know, a kind of normal seeming unemployment rate, but, but looking more at what supports are there for, for workforce development and for small businesses, for instance. Another topic was bringing together newer immigrant and older immigrant communities, that's kind of how we're, we're thinking of the different demographics in Milford. Economic development funding opportunities is another topic, development opportunity, seeing, you know, where there are parcels or areas for, for increased development, and then wayfinding was another one I, I heard someone talk about, especially at the 495 intersection, so...
We actually used to, I don't know what condition it's in anymore, but the Bear Hill Industrial Park area actually did have wayfinding from 495 up to the, up to the Bear Hill Industrial Park, what condition, if that's still prevalent or not, but that was a wayfinding that was there. Part of it was, I think, because of the difficulty in actually finding the place, because of the, the one-way on Beaver Street, but that being said, I, I know, you know, doing work for the MBTA and stuff, that, especially as you get out into communities with commuter rail stations, wayfinding off of the main highways going to them is, is somewhat important to them, and I can understand how it could be important to, you know, industrial areas within the town of Milford, so that, that certainly is something that, you know, maybe, maybe something that would be interesting to, to see how that may affect us.
Yeah.
The best, best way of finding for Bear Hill is to get two-way Beaver Street signals fixed at Beaver and one line, which we're in the process of doing.
Yep.
Yeah, the problem with that, it's been there, it's kind of beat up and it's, it's an antique right now, because some of the companies aren't even there, or...
Well, several of those, several of those ID signs, they were all done back when EDC was the IDC, and they raised money from the area, but there was no long-term maintenance plan, there was no thought to how that was going to work, so occasionally we tried to fix them. What we've been able to do for that kind of development, when it was IDC, was still refer back to the sign plan that was adopted for that whole operation in the first place, so that businesses that want to change them come through and get approval, so that they're putting, we send them in spec so that they hire their sign company to fix the sign, but what the sign company designs matches our original approved design. And they, and they do it, but that doesn't always, isn't consistent that way.
I mean, I think the economic development funding opportunities is obviously something that the town, when they're aware of them, I think has made efforts to try to, you know, do that, we haven't, we haven't for years, I guess I'll put it, haven't had anybody that's been tasked specifically to do that, so that's one of the issues that we've, that we've had, but certainly, you know, if there's things out there, that, that would, that would be good if the state, you know, if the state is running specific things that they're, that they're continuing to run through, you know, each year, if there's, there's opportunities, then I think that would be important going forward, and I think the town would probably look into trying to see what it would take to complete those applications and stuff, so I think that would be, that would be something, certainly a topic that would be of interest.
Great.
And if we fill the position, we'd actually have staff to administer those.
Yep.
Wouldn't you be a novel approach?
Yeah, there's, there's maintenance, none done on anything.
Right.
They made beautiful walls, what's the descriptions of Bear Hill area and all that, if they get hit or something, nobody fixes them, you just let them go, and it's, you can put all the, all the stuff up you want, if there's no maintenance and no maintenance plan, there's, there's going to be nothing in the end.
You know, in terms of bringing together newer immigrant and older immigrant communities, I, I think part of that, as you guys move further on in, in meeting people in the town and stuff, I'd be interested to see how much input you're getting from the newer immigrant communities and how well you're able to reach them or not, in terms of whether, whether that would be a topic that would move forward. If, if you're having a difficult time getting them and, and having inputs from them and stuff, then I'm not sure that that path will provide much, but if you're getting a, a big, I want to say big, if you're, if you're getting inputs from the newer immigrant community, then that may be something that, that's worthwhile.
Yeah, that's great, yeah, definitely, and we're hoping that the Community-Based Organization Immersion Day next Tuesday will really instigate some of those connections.
I think it depends on which immigrant community you're talking about, there's clearly there's a sizable existing Portuguese community in town and the existing Portuguese club...
Yeah, yeah, I would, I would consider them, yeah, I would consider them an old, an older community.
Well, when you have new Portuguese immigrants, the existing community reaches out to them, but the other immigrant groups...
Yeah, I think the, I think the Central South American probably being the lodges that have, that have come in now, I'd be more interested in, in those communities, I think that, you know, the, to a certain extent, I think the Portuguese community themselves handles the newer and older, I mean, they all, so that, that, you know, it sort of doesn't really happen, I think it's, it's more important to get newer immigrants being those that are, that are of different origins than those that have already been in town.
That's, big thing with that is time.
Yeah.
Time is going to be the biggest problem, and their, their own organization getting together, the Portuguese community is a very tight community, and they work together when they built the first club, the second club, and they do, they work well with the, with the rest of the community too, I mean, not just among themselves, they work very well with them, you know, I think if these other ones get closer to themselves and organized amongst themselves, and with the time and the organization, I think it'd be, it'd be really part of the community right away, you know, sooner.
Yeah.
Okay, so kind of a structural approach.
I think the Portuguese, Portuguese club, the model, or the Portuguese community inside the model, for these other agencies, these other groups, if they're interested, to try to do this.
Yeah, it was, yeah, it was the same way with the Italians, I mean, the Italians got together, they, there used to be like a dozen Italian clubs around town, there's two or three of them now that are, you know, together and they, and they, again, not only with the Italians, but they work with themselves, they work with the rest of the town, they work with the Portuguese club, community rather, and so, so that's, the organization among the new, the newer immigrants is going to be probably a big, the biggest factor.
Yeah, interesting, the, the kind of clubs structure here is noticeable, I haven't seen that in other places as much, so, interesting.
Yeah, I think you're, you're probably seeing to a certain extent, unfortunately, you know, probably the waning ends of those, to be honest.
Okay.
I think they, they phase themselves out, it, you know, people that are, I guess I could say my age and, and stuff, they're, they're still somewhat active in those types of clubs, people that are younger are very, there's very few, it's just not one of those things, even though there are members of, of all of those communities in the town, they're not members of those clubs to any large extent, but most of us that have any involvement with them were, you know, our parents and grandparents, because that was a social outlet at the time, but, you know, the, the type of social interactions now are so different that the, the club thing is, is, is waning.
Yeah.
Same thing with the veterans organizations.
Yeah, right, definitely, so, so let me ask this then, when, economic development means a lot of different things to a lot of different people, what, when you, when you hear economic development in Milford, what does that bring to mind?
Yeah, from my side, economic development's going to be the industry side of things.
Okay.
And kind of from the tax revenue, generating more tax revenue as the city grows, and that's actually kind of a segue where I was going to ask about, you know, if you look at these, the market profiles where office and, you know, office and, sorry, retail have more vacancies, but our, but our industrial side of it, there's no vacancies.
Yeah.
So yeah, how do you foresee transitioning, or do, or do we have to look at transitioning some of our zoning to allow for more industrial, and I guess, and what, what are those impacts overall? So, we see that we have office space, so how do we transition that office space to an industrial space to, again, that's, that's the need, it looks, it sounds like right now, it's a 0%, if we're, there are no vacancies in that department, that market.
Yeah, I think that's a great question and something I would love to look into, yeah.
Obviously, yeah.
It's a, it's a need, right?
Yeah, and I don't know if Zoe has ideas about the data we would use to think about that transition and impacts, but...
Well, I'm curious, it sounded like you were saying there's some transition from a stop-and-shop kind of retail complex towards an industrial, at least on the market, I'd be curious to know what that developer is experiencing and what it takes to make that conversion, like, realistically.
Money.
Yeah. Yeah.
As well.
Yeah, right.
But if he's looking for investors, yeah, where's he looking for that?
That was a, I think the company that, that wanted to move in there is looking for investors. That, again, that, that somewhat was a unique situation. That property was actually, went into bankruptcy. The bank reached out to the company that redeveloped it into an industrial, a mixed-use industrial, retail setup. They've done that, everybody knows who it is, R. Kelly is the name of the company. They, they do that work as a, apparently as a, well-known to do that in, in the banking circle. So the banks reached out to them where they felt that there was higher and better usage to mixed-use in there, and they, they came forward to us with that. So I, it's, it's somewhat unique, and it went through a process to get there, so, you know, that's one of the problems with, with trying to do this and saying we're doing it. It, it, you know, how do you get there? In this case, it was driven not, not by our zoning or anything else, it was driven by an outside force that sort of brought it down that path.
It was less about the development and more about looking for a tenant in that development? Do you understand?
They, well, I, I, I'm not sure, you'd have to talk to the developer, I don't want to put words in their mouth for certain. They, they felt that they would be able to attract an industrial office-type usage in that space. And it was, as Babe said, it was a stop-and-shop, TJ Maxx, you know, Home Goods, and that they, those, those companies had moved elsewhere in Milford, and the ability to do attract newer retail was almost nil. So they, their feeling was they needed to change the usage if they were going to get any type of, of usage into that, into that park.
Yeah, so they got Ambry to come down from Marlborough to build their new facility there for their liquid battery operation.
Wow.
And then that's what's run into financing problems, which is why it doesn't look like there's a lot going on there, but that's not necessarily the case. But the quirk of all of this is, in, what was it, the seventies, I think, Milford adopted the current IA zoning district, or IB zoning district, which is a kitchen sink district. You can do everything, including the kitchen sink, but you can't have residential. So they rezoned the area adjacent to 495 where Fortune Boulevard got developed, and that sucked everything out of downtown because it allowed everything, including the kitchen sink, and a whole bunch of used car dealerships. So that's, we've wasted all kinds of industrial land, prime industrial land, with a bunch of used car dealerships. Next in line was the hotels and motels. Next in line was a bunch of retail. Last in line was the industrial, which would have been the most important thing for the town to shoot for, and luckily, we've got the Milton Katz of the world, the Waters, the companies that you listed. But had we had better zoning, more exclusive industrial zoning, there'd be more of those guys, instead of car dealerships and hotels and a few things like that, and retail, which hasn't always worked out so well. And if that's not bad enough that we shot ourselves in the foot in terms of zoning uses and patterns and how you, where you relocate those districts and when, the State's 40B has managed to make sure that any vacant land that we had as prime industrial got used up as 40Bs. So we have two 40Bs up on Deer Street, which was new business park zoning. We lost a major portion of the industrial park behind the fire station in the Bear Hill area because there's a 40B there. So had it not been for 40B, we'd have a lot more available, developable industrial land for the very uses that are clearly what would make all of this work even better than it already is. And we wouldn't have a zero availability score at all. There, there would be quite a bit more.
You can see is a good thing, you know?
Well, it isn't if you don't have any more developable land. If land that would have otherwise been developable is now a bunch of affordable housing, that's not going to really stay affordable very long anyway, the town really got taken for a ride, I think, so, anyway.
Well, the interesting part, and I guess it's one of the things, it's, the, the two that are on Deer Street for five, six years, it was its own business park, and as far as we know, they couldn't get anybody in. So although there appears, there appears to be a need, by, by the numbers that you're showing, a need for industrial, and I guess it depends on what you define industrial as, sometimes that, that could be part of the issue, but they couldn't get anybody to bite. I, maybe, maybe the development money isn't there that, to, to get over the hump, to get people to actually build, to then rent those things out, because we didn't see it, you know, and, and that's what forced effectively a developer that, that had very limited experience in 40B going to a 40B development and not a business park, which is what they had traditionally done. You know, they had sat on it for what they felt was long enough, and they wanted to turn it over at that point in time. So it, it's interesting that you're showing that number, but yet they, you know, I don't think it's something that a lot of people buy, you know, would, would do on spec, and they couldn't get people tied up enough to, to go out and, and actually build the building, so. Yeah, I, I don't know. I mean, I don't know what the answer is, but, you know, obviously, looking at that, I'd say, oh geez, we should, we should, we should make sure our industrial areas are, are as, make sure the zoning is such that we can, we can get to higher and better usages in there because people will want to do it. But yet, you know, sitting on this board, at least for the last 15 years of sitting on this board, I haven't seen, and I would assume this has traditionally been the case, obviously that data is, you know, at least the past five, six years, I haven't seen people wanting to build any new industrial stuff.
Interesting. Yeah, thank you for all those comments. Unless you want to add anything else, we can move on to the downtown section. Sound good? Okay, great. So, so for downtown, we have heard that a lot of people are really excited about downtown, and we've heard that, and some folks are thinking of it as in need of revitalization, other folks kind of see it a lot of different ways. So what we decided was we should go downtown and do a survey of what are all of the storefronts downtown. So this kind of scattered map comes from the Downtown Revitalization Committee, was the original outline of what is downtown, and then we counted every storefront within that and categorized it. So for instance, the, the black dots are the public or institutional ones, like, you know, town hall, post office, but also churches and, and other religious institutions, and then all the other colors that I don't need to list out. So if we look at the next slide here, this is the breakdown of the business mix in the downtown. So we counted 150 businesses, and that's almost all first floor, but there were a few second floor that we counted that had a very clear sign with, you know, stairs going up to, say, a law firm or something like that. Out of those 150, we counted 11 vacancies, so, pretty, pretty good, I think. The, let's see, oh my gosh, it's so hard to read. I think, so retail is the blue, 18%, yeah, I think so. The 17% below that is professional services, so that's, you know, insurance or stuff like that. The 16% in green is, is personal care, so, you know, your, your salons and that kind of thing. The 15%, what, what is that?
I think it's food.
Food, yes, yes, thank you. So those are restaurants, but also grocery stores. Let's see, 12%, that's a public or institutional, and, and smaller from there, we have business services like repair shops, vacant, we saw medical services and 5%, a lot of dentists we noticed downtown, and then the 2% is automotive services as well. So this seems like a, a pretty interesting and vibrant mix, diverse business mix in the downtown. So we wanted to kind of put that out there and, and then start into our discussion. So our discussion questions are, again, what strikes you about this, and what should we focus on as we continue our analysis of downtown? What additional data would you like us to do for downtown? I can give some examples if, if you want, but we'll just start before that. And then, what would help implement your long-term and Milford's long-term mixed-use vision of downtown? And finally, kind of similar to my previous question, what would help bring the town's cultures, the many cultures, together downtown?
Have you struggled getting the downtown business owners, what are the pros and cons of being a downtown business?
So we, we do want to. We want to speak more directly to them. We recognize that we'll need translation, interpretation support for that, so we have not yet. But we are going to connect with the Chamber of Commerce that will hopefully help us start to get into that. And then I noticed there were so many Brazilian stores, so we want to bring a Portuguese speaker with us, but, yeah.
Yeah, because I think having that information obviously will spearhead, you know, directionality of, of how to make improvements, right?
Okay.
What's good, what's not good.
Yeah, great.
I mean, I think obviously one of the, one of the things, and this is, this is something that we continue to get, we continue to hear here, and we have a very tough time reacting to it, is we want to make downtown vibrant. We're dealing with a very low space that, in terms of what isn't rented. It's like, what is vibrant? What, what, what is going to do that considering almost every building is occupied?
Yeah.
You know, what's, what's the expectation that makes you say that? And unfortunately, for a lot of people, you know, I, I think it's the people that are older than me that are, you know, remembering back when there was four men's stores downtown and, and four ladies' stores downtown, and there used to be a relatively big supermarket downtown, and you used to go there. That's not coming back. It doesn't matter what we do or change, that's, that's not coming back. And, and that, that's, if that's what makes downtown vibrant, then face the fact, you're not going to have a downtown that's vibrant. I, I don't know what, you know, and I, and I looked at that when we looked at the vision and stuff, and if those words were in there, and I'm like, where is that? What, what, what are we, what are we going to do? I think we've talked about, and certainly you reached into that in terms of our long-term mixed-use vis, vision, is the, the allowance of mixed-use downtown somehow, be that at the upper stories of the, of the buildings. And I'm not sure anybody's going to, going to bite the bullet to spend, to put an elevator to get to those thirds and fourth floors to do that or not, but right now, they really don't even have the choice. So, you know, at least to give them that opportunity, to me, is something that, that I think this plan has to address, and at least tell us, give us a roadmap to get there. You know, if there were another restaurant downtown, that would be great, you know, okay, fine. But again, there isn't, there isn't a lot of space there to, to get us to that point. There isn't a lot of available rental available. I remember, maybe, maybe goes back 25 years ago, that, that the downtown was tough. There was a lot of open space, a lot of it was, you know, the, the newspapers boarding up the, covering the windows, no tenants in there or not. That isn't the case anymore with downtown Milford. You know, and I think rail trail helped significantly in terms of, of providing at least a mixed-use through there, in terms of changing out a bank to a, a restaurant. But that was one area that was actually very nice no matter what. The bank always kept that property well and was, so I, I, I guess, in terms of being able to address the things that I see in here, some of it is difficult for me, and I think if you, if you look at it, it's going to be difficult for you to address in terms of pulling that together and saying, okay, what did, what did these people mean when they say that? And how, how would we get there? Because I, I, I'm not sure I always see the correlation.
Yeah, and again, there's, there's a number of Brazilian restaurants.
Yeah.
And some nice ones, too.
Yeah.
You know, real, and I think that's going to help get, that's one thing that's going to get the community together. But like Joe says, there's no vacancies. The vacancies in the upstairs, it's going to cost the people so much that, to, to make access for the ADA, you have requirements, it's, it's not going to be done.
Yeah.
Unless they get something that's huge, I don't see it. But the downtown, the town, and again, like I said the last time, it comes into money. But the down, the town is going to take care of the downtown a little bit better. Because when you go to, my thing is, when you go to a shopping center, it's, the snow's gone, it's there, you walk out, it's staying, you're safe, it's not slippery. You go downtown, the, the snow, you park, you can't open the door because of the snowbags in the winter time, and this is something that these people are paying the one, one and a half times the tax rate. And they're not getting the same, I mean, I realize the people in the shopping centers are paying for their, for that themselves, but this is downtown, this is what they did. And what I said, at one time, when, in our, when I was younger, a long time ago, when you, two days after a snowstorm, you couldn't tell, in downtown Milford, you couldn't tell the snow, there was nothing left. And that's something that's going to be, the sidewalk's going to be clean and all that, and that's, not only to make it better, but to keep it as, as vibrant as it is. And I agree with Joe 100%. It's, you can't make it any more vibrant than it is right now, it's almost impossible.
And the other thing, to a certain extent, you know, as you get deeper into it, you know, I, I've heard the things about the, the amount of churches and stuff, it, to me, at the end of the day, that, that mixed-use provides the town with perhaps more benefit, because I think most of those are rentals, so it's not like it's a, it's a non-taxable situation, it's still a taxable situation. They, they provide, they bring people to the downtown at various points in non-peak hours so that we, we get, we, we get to extend the day downtown, which is, you know, you go back to Boston and Washington Street, and you walk Washington Street at 6 o'clock at night and it's dead because there was no, there was no other usages to bring people there. Well, that's, that's, with the churches, that's not necessarily the case, there are usages that bring people. So to me, the, the churches are doing the town a benefit, a huge benefit, and, and, you know, I'm not looking to have every, every building to be a church in downtown Milford, but I, but I also believe that there's a significant benefit to the ones that are there, and they also address part of the, bringing the cultures together in the downtown area.
Interesting. Yeah, how about we go to the, is it on the next one? Oh, sorry, I, I guess I didn't put it in there. So if we keep on here, and I'll just say additional data that we were thinking about, Josh and I this morning, about, that we could look into for downtown. One is do a kind of similar survey that we did on the ground floor, but a second floor use to, to really catalog what's really there. And that would be a little bit harder than the first floor, but I think we could figure it out. And then kind of a soft site analysis of redevelopment opportunities, like see how many are one-story, or, or kind of other opportunities like that. And then parking-related data as well. I, I know you talked about transportation last time, but account of on-street and off-street spaces in downtown, parking utilization of those spaces, and parking signage. So are any of those points, would they be helpful to you, interesting?
Well, I can send you a lot of data that we already have on those points, so it'll save you, save you a little trouble. Some of it, I think it was already in the Dropbox, but I can check back and see if-
Yeah, you should probably highlight that, because I think there is, a lot of that stuff is available, Larry would have that. I mean, how it affects the, the comprehensive plan, it may, it may not, but it, it may help other, other things that are going on in the town. So certainly those, you know, the, the parking issue and stuff keeps rearing its head at various points in time. I, I think there's a large contingent of people that, that don't see the need for additional parking, at least to the extent of spending millions of dollars on a parking deck. So, you know, we've asked, or they've asked for parking data from those people, that's never happened, but as part of this to at least some level, and, and I don't know that it can be all-inclusive, but at least have some level of information on that, I think that would probably help the town in, in various ways.
Yeah, just to have the data-
Yeah.
-in the comp plan.
Yeah.
You know, the fact that there are actually over 700 off-street parking spaces just in the immediate downtown area.
Yeah.
That we keep telling them, but they keep ignoring it. So maybe if it's in the plan, they have to look at it every once in a while. So I'll check through the Dropbox and, and see what's already in there and get you whatever additional there might be. And I think our short-term Assistant Town Administrator slash Economic Development Director, in the month or so that he was here, had begun a survey of, of upper floors- in the month or so that he was here, had begun a survey of upper-floor vacancies downtown. So I'll try and find that and see if it's intelligible, what he put together.
Thank you, that'd be great. Yeah, absolutely.
How about stormwater or flooding-type issues? Because that is some, there's a lot of old drainage there that we don't know a lot about, and I know Rail Trail spent quite a few dollars trying to fix their drainage, and I know that they're not the only ones that have had it. So that could be something for the downtown, you know, especially where it could have been cost prohibitive at some point for Rail Trail to be able to, I don't know if they have kitchen in the basement or whatever, but that would be something that I would be interested in.
Yeah. Thank you, interesting.
Another thing is, I've seen if the owners get together and connect where the buildings, the second floors are, brick to brick.
Yeah.
I see in Indianapolis, they did that, they put a whole shopping mall on the second, of course, it's not as big, but they did it. And a small thing, if you get two or three buildings on the second floor, and could connect them all, again, that was a use, that was a use I thought was great in downtown Indianapolis.
Yeah, interesting.
Would that work for, like, trying to do residential up there, too? Like, limiting the number of, you have one elevator, no? Because I think housing is definitely something that we're struggling with, especially lower-income housing. We have a lot of overcrowding. I think part of that is due to the cost of apartments around here. So I think at least starting with an ability for people to create housing in the downtown where they have access to the laundromat and the little grocery stores and the restaurants. So I think at least starting with allowing it would be a step in the right direction, but certainly the cost is something that...
Right now, it's allowed over 55.
Yeah, well, that's not where we need it.
When they did zoning change for St. Mary's...
None of those would meet that, because of the size of the lots.
Right.
So you're still in a situation where you don't have, you don't have mixed-use zoning downtown.
And it's not, so you created it for over 55 people, and those apartments, I can't afford to own, so, or rent.
I understand.
So that's not, so you've created, you've created, but not for what you need it to be.
That was the only way it was going to pass down meeting.
Yeah, and that was a surgical amendment at that.
Yeah. Right, it was also a big mistake, but we won't get into that. Yeah, and I don't, I don't think affordable, I understand where you're going with that, but I don't think affordable units are going to work down there, just for the fact of how much they'd have to spend to get them in there. Those aren't going to be where the affordable ones, if there were any affordable, and they already are, if you look, is, which are close to those areas, they're going up Spruce Street, going up Pine Street, you know, going up Fayette Street. Those houses in there, where they're relatively close to the downtown, close to those things, but they provide housing on all floors there, is where there's some level of affordability. If it's going to happen downtown, those units are going to be like here. They're going to, the only way the numbers come out are going to be at a higher level.
Bylaws only allow two, only allow two apartments.
Yeah, they're all, yeah, they're all existing non-conforming usages really in that whole area, because that's no longer allowed. And that's something that, you know, maybe it's, to a certain extent, time to look at that to a cer, you know. The town went away from multifamily zoning due to, there was five, six apartment, garden apartment-type setups that came into town almost at the same time, and the town, as we've seen now, got inundated with new students in the school system. And the biggest mechanism to stop that was effectively, we changed our zoning to, you know, all we have now is duplex zoning in the I R zone, is the only multifamily that's allowed.
And how has that worked recently in restricting the number of students?
Well, let's, yeah, well, and that's why I'm saying perhaps, maybe it doesn't work anymore, per se. I mean, the zoning that, the lack of zoning back, I guess it was probably, what, the late 60s, when we changed the zoning? You know, it's a different dynamic now than it was then, and maybe that duplex zoning, only duplex zoning is not, you know, doesn't work now. Maybe it needs to be a little bit more loose in terms of what people can build or not build to try to get some level of multi... I don't think we, and I certainly am not looking to put in, you know, 200, 300 units of apartment-type, style buildings in the town of Milford, but, you know, a three or four-family in certain areas maybe isn't all that bad of an idea.
Well, you're going to get two more 40Bs before too awful long, so...
Yeah, that's, well, that's, you know, as much as we need it and everything, a 40B is a virus. That's the only thing, it's, it takes, the town goes out and zones and everything, and does the industrial land, so they can make it so that the town's profitable and survive, and then they come up with this 40B, and it just takes it away with no say. I mean, it's, as much as we need housing, we still need money to supply the rest of the town.
The fact of the matter politically, and this is one that doesn't totally make sense to me, I mean, we've had 40B for I don't know how long. Has it worked? No, it hasn't even come close. If we think that's the best way to get affordable housing, then, you know, there's something wrong. And that's the whole problem, is we have people in the legislature and the governor's office that actually think this thing works, and it doesn't come anywhere close.
It's called cognitive dissonance.
What we need is like, the one at the corner of Reed Street and East Main Street, like, there's eight apartments in there, and everybody, half the people in Milford, when they first got married, they moved in there, because it was small, it was affordable, and they could do it.
Right, but it's not allowed right now.
I know, that's what I'm saying. We've got to do something with the zoning. The same thing with the, on Green Street, there's those two brick apartments, same thing. They're beautiful, and they're nice, and people can do it. That's, you know, again, I'm, I don't want 300 apartment builders, but 10, 8, 10, that's good for the town.
So, circling back to kind of the comprehensive plan. You know, so you heard a lot of history, you know, but ultimately, we're going to try to focus in on a plan, and what that plan, you know, just considering downtown right now, right? Do you foresee that plan, looking into that real estate along the downtown, and that second, you know, the second and third stories, in seeing what is its current use, what its potential use? And then, if we were to change those usages, what is the potential positive impact on the area? Like, is that where you foresee this plan going? Do you also foresee that, looking at how to potentially change, you know, the second and third story to some type of residential, is there an impact on parking that's going to be required? Right? So, do you foresee that part of it? You know, I'm sitting here from the planning board side, and you from the comprehensive planning side, and how we can work together for, again, that funneling into a plan? And what will those plans need to create a better environment downstairs?
Yeah, no, absolutely, thank you. I love that. I think it would be great for us to kind of do that second-floor analysis, and the potentials, the different options, that that could include the kind of economic impact side. I know it's harder to do on a small scale, so I would, I might actually work with Zoe to see, you know, what kind of, what kind of data we could use to really look into that.
And I would look at that, too, right? You know, data, 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 right? Where, you know, I just look at it from the school side, right? You know, the school side, we constantly are looking at data, right, and assessments, and utilize that data on how to formulate next steps, right? So what data can we extract from the downtown area to start formulating the next steps? I don't know what that data is, but I hope you might be able to pull that together.
Yeah, and I think that's our charge right now, so...
Yeah, that's in the contract, so...
Let me come up with it.
A lot of that we've already started on, so, like I said, is it already in the Dropbox? I'll send it to you.
Feel free to jump in anytime.
A lot of conservation stuff downtown.
Well, I know that.
Yeah, no, this is great, and I believe you'll have another housing discussion, but our housing staff, I'll make sure that he gets to watch this recording.
Yeah, we kind of went into the housing part more than...
It's important.
I understand.
Yeah, it's also economic development, all of it, so, okay. Any final comments on economic development or downtown? I guess I did want to ask, we've spoken with the EDC, we've spoken with the Downtown Revitalization Committee, going to connect with Chamber of Commerce, is there anyone else who I should make sure to connect with?
I don't know who you spoke with on the EDC, because you haven't been able to come to a meeting yet.
Yeah, yeah.
So, we, there was one interview, one member that did the original interview, Tony Pinto, and then one other did a follow-up interview separately. But those are the only two members of the EDC that have had, you've had any contact with. So...
Yes, yeah.
That needs to, we need to set something up.
Yeah.
Since I'm chairman, I could arrange that for you, so...
Thank you.
We need to, you know, have at least one session with the EDC members, if we can get them together. I think they'd be amenable to meeting on an off-night, so we'll just set something up.
Any other organizations, folks, that we should talk to? Oh, that's okay, all right, great. Well, I think we're on good timing here, so if we move on to kind of the end of today, we just wanted to mention that the existing conditions analysis is forthcoming. That will be our first deliverable as part of this process, and it will be available for the next Ad Hoc Committee meeting. It compiles existing data, kind of like what we're talking through today on each topic, and it will be a foundation for the goals and strategies. So this next slide shows all of the sections, wow, really not readable, that's okay. So it will have existing conditions data for housing, and for economic development, and open space, and all of those topics. In terms of the next steps after this evening, we will do, we'll be doing additional community engagement activities. The next Ad Hoc Committee meeting is August 13th, and the primary topic there is land use. And that will be, you'll hear from Josh and Courtney again, as our land use really specialists there. We'll also be talking about the draft vision statement and the existing conditions brief. So I think that's it for you all. Yeah, thank you, thank you so much for tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming even without the, for the guys.
Oh, yeah, you know.
We didn't need them, anyway.
We made it, yeah, really, no. They're wonderful, so, yeah. They were sorry they couldn't be here. Josh was trying to finagle going to here and Ipswich in one night, and that's far.
All set?
Thank you very much.
Thanks a lot. Hopefully Courtney's feeling better.
Ah, yeah, yeah, I hope so.
I'll check Thursday and see what else we can send that might not already be in the Dropbox.
Okay, great.
Before we close tomorrow, obviously, so...
Right, yes, yes, I think us as well.
Yes.
Yes, so no worries on that front. I forgot, it's a Wednesday, right?
Thanks a lot.
Okay, 81P, I'd taken, we're going to postpone that till the next meeting.
Yeah, possibly. I didn't see him come in, so I'm assuming that's kicked over.
Larry said there was a problem with the application, so he was supposed to change it, but they're not here, so we'll go on. Let's go on to Rosenfeld Park, amended site plan.
Did you want me to read through this real quick? And Liz is here, obviously, she's got the better report.
Don't say better, just...
Since mine's on top.
More to say.
It's shorter, so. This amended site plan, the Milford Parks Department for Rosenfeld Field Parking Lot on Cedar Street, Parks Department requests amended site plan approval for parking lot improvements at the Rosenfeld Field Parking Lot off Cedar Street. Specifically, the project consists of the rehab and expansion of the existing lot, while maintaining access to the boat ramp. Stormwater basin has been included to treat stormwater from the entire paved areas, and perimeter landscaping will be provided along the southerly edge of the lot. In addition, two landscape islands are proposed within the expanded parking area. The finished parking lot will provide for a total of 101 parking spaces. We're recommending approval subject to relevant agency comments. The main one is Liz's, so if you want to paraphrase yours, it's there in front of you in the packet.
Let's see if I can find my... So, the, Larry said, the parking lot, I think most of you are familiar with it, there was a paved parking area, and then there was a gravelly area off to the left side as you would drive in. The, we were, they were going to be repaving the existing parking lot, and so as part of that, they were, the Parks Department was looking to expand the parking into the gravelly area. In addition, the Conservation Commission had discussions earlier, maybe a year ago, I'm not exactly sure, about constructing an earth berm, or at the time, it was just a discussion on how to, how to prevent continued encroachment into the wetland and the dumping of trash. And we came to the, collectively came to the conclusion that an earth berm with some arborvitae's would be, I guess, the most appropriate. So that was incorporated into the plan. The, there was additional parking spaces. Because we are technically increasing the infervious pavement, we then needed to be able to provide some stormwater and stormwater treatment, kind of opted for treatment over the, traditionally with stormwater, we worry more about heat flows and things like that, but in this particular case, I felt that this was a good opportunity for us to get some phosphorus removal, not only on the new part of the parking lot, but on the existing parking lot. That was what the detention basin is focused on, is providing the phosphorus removal, and that's part of what we, what we're required to do for the MS4 anyway, and we're spending money in other areas to try and get it, so it made sense to me to try and address that here. When the plan was initially designed, I almost said Tatum, Gary Aaron-Hellman, had put islands, landscape islands, in basically all of the areas that have striped, striping in the existing parking lot, and created the parking, the islands, the two islands in the expanded area, and increased the one by the entrance, increased the size significantly at the entrance. There was, as Scott mentions in his letter, there was... was, as Scott mentioned in his letter, there was concern about plowing, and since the existing parking lot is an existing parking lot, I, I felt as though I was compromising and saying that we weren't going to bring the existing parking lot into compliance with the zoning requirements for the interior landscaping, but that I felt very strongly it needed to be done for the piece that was an expansion. And I felt that that was, I felt that that pretty well addressed the idea of what needed to be accessible from a plowing standpoint because the biggest use of that in the winter is the boat ramp for access when we used to get ice. But, so there's no islands proposed in that area, so there's no, I don't see it being a big issue, plowing the existing parking lot as pretty much they have in the past and just storing all the snow in between those two landscape islands. It just doesn't seem like a big ask to me. So that's my recommendation. So the landscape islands, when the binder went down, the landscape islands were not paved. And part of the reason that this work was done before it got here to you was that I was working with G&amp;H trying to get the, we were finalizing stuff with the plan, in particular with the drainage, and it, and they were trying to get the pavement done because pavement prices are going up drastically, and so I was working with them and I felt as, I felt as though they were doing what I thought this board would want, and so I didn't make a big deal about them moving forward. But then, the day or two after the binder went down, the landscape islands were paved.
They didn't blow up.
So my recommendation is that you have, that you require them to reinstall those two islands at a minimum, and certainly, you know, I wouldn't be opposed to additional islands in the parking, in the existing parking area. I felt that that, I felt, I feel like there's things we could, we could try to do to put additional islands in there that would still be, you know, not too intrusive, but that's, that's where I stand.
What's the fundamental reason for having the islands versus the painted areas?
So it's, it's really, there's multiple reasons. One, the, so the two landscape islands that you see there, they're end caps to the, so it provides, yeah, provides protection to the cars that are parked there. Right. The first is that they're required by the zoning by law, but the reason that they're required by the zoning by law has to do with safety. It slows people down. You know, my father referenced the Kmart, the old Kmart parking lot. I would fly through there, God only knows how fast diagonally across all of the spaces, you know, that, when you have islands, that it slows people down, it shows people a direction that they need to be going, and makes it safer for pedestrians.
Well, it reinforces your striping pattern and the circulation pattern in the lot because they stick up off of the surface as well as having the landscaping in it, which is also a zoning requirement.
Yeah, and then there's, and that's the other, you know, I personally don't, I love asphalt, concrete, pavement. It doesn't, I don't, I'm not a big nature person, but you can't, I can't imagine that anybody would say that, that Kmart parking lot doesn't look less.
It looks more inviting.
You know, it's just, it is. It's more pleasant to look at.
And you actually live through using it, you know, and then go back and do it again.
So, you know, breaking up pavement is, and providing shade for the tree, you know, providing some shade for the vehicles that are parked in places, those are, these are all important. They're, you know, less important than safety, but it's part of what.
It's why there's zoning, right? Exactly.
That's right.
So you don't have to justify the entire zoning by law. That's the short answer.
I didn't think he was looking for the short answer.
I did, I said globally.
That's important to me.
Exactly.
So the binder's already down to this size?
It's actually already final paved.
But doesn't it have binder, or does it?
It has binder and final paved.
Oh.
Because if we were trying to decrease amount of pavement, we could have done that second row as a, as a diagonal parking and cut down the width of that and still gotten the same amount of parking in there, and made that a one-way through that backside and would have.
Well, but trying to enforce that is difficult, so.
Well, if people don't want to, then they're not going to have the parking spots, but it's easy enough to do it. I mean, you know, making that a one-way in and just have them circle through that bottom section would have worked and narrowed us up probably 12 feet in terms of width. But if it's already there, we're certainly not going back to it. I mean, the problem.
If it's already there, it's not striped, so I will tell you.
Yeah, but if we, I mean, the pavement's there, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just saying, one of the questions Larry asked was, because it's not laid out particularly, it's not laid out the way we would lay out a parking lot from scratch. You wouldn't, you wouldn't have this back row that has, you have an extra drive aisle for just those spaces. So I didn't have G&amp;H look at any other layouts because we were at time.
Well, it's, yeah, well, yeah, it's, yeah, it's a moot point. If the binder finished coated down, I'm not going to go down that path. I'm just saying there were probably more economical ways of doing it. I mean, the only thing I have, I don't mind the trees, I don't mind the island. To be honest, I think two trees on each island is going to be, I know that's what the bylaw says, and we tried to get there, but I'll tell you, most of those trees die because we don't provide, we don't provide enough loomed area for those trees to live. I mean, it's probably something that at some point we need to look at in terms of our bylaw to perhaps change, and I'm not saying, you know, I'm not saying the total number of trees we require or whatever, but the infill trees in the parking lot, I go around to most of them, and they look like crap. You know, they're half-dead.
Well, that's because the town is a big area.
Well, no, it's not the town situation, it's everywhere. I'm talking about all of them, I mean.
It's easy to add if you spec the law.
That's, I was just going to say.
Well, we can do that, but the fact of the matter is, if you, if you look through any of the, any of the documentation for how much a tree needs for space, two trees in that area won't, won't make any, any of those requirements. It's just, it's just not enough. So they're not going to do well, no matter what Chuckie does or what he specs.
And regardless, that, that area was really asphalt grindings before the pavement went down anyway, so they cut out the pavement, they're still, you know.
Yeah, they're going to have to, I mean, to make this, they're going to have to dig down four or five feet and put in some sort of decent material for these to grow. We'll see if that happens, but. I, I mean, to me, I would rather see, plus the other factor is when you put the trees in there, that tree, especially if the limbs are down low, you open the door, it's right there. I'd rather see one tree right at the, right at the center line on both sides and be done with it. And, you know, put, you know, put the tree along the, you know, if you want to put another tree and put them along the edge and just put one tree in that island, at least it might have a chance to grow and at least it'll be out of the way so that people can open their doors when they, if they're parked in that first space.
Maybe it also makes the islands wider, if they lose a, lose a parking stall.
Yeah, well, I'm not going to, I'm not going to go down that path. At least I'm not. I don't care what people may, but I'm not, but I, you know, I don't think it's a big, a big deal to change it to one age.
I'm, I'm still dealing with the, with the build it first and then draw it later. I think that's a problem. I mean, if this is the plan, we all agree on the plan, I would happen to rework, have it, have it fixed. That's my opinion.
I was wondering, you're also increasing the size of the, that island right at the entrance, you said, too, right?
Yes.
Is it still, is there still enough width on each side for two-way traffic?
Yes.
Okay, so it doesn't, it's not, yeah.
Yeah, we, we actually increased the depth of it, not the, it wasn't really usable, it wasn't really usable pavement.
I just wasn't sure if there was any.
No.
Anything that we'd had to do to look at from a one-way in, one-way out in traffic pattern? My other question, then, you would think, is it just that cent, that center row, just in the middle, that's what the other thought was, to have another proposed island there and then maybe down at the end towards the boat ramp?
Yes. And, you know, the ones that they initially were showing, because the bylaw says you can't have more than 25, 25 spaces. So they did have, they did have islands up against the fence to the, but that's problematic because they can't get in, we would have to, because of the gates, they had them where the, and they need to be able to get in, so.
It would be prohibitive to get access into the field areas. Okay, that's fine. I just wasn't sure, again, if we, if it's the bylaw to add that other one down the center.
So the issue with plowing, I mean, I, obviously, this is a baseball field, and the only access you need is going down to the boat ramp.
I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm not down there in the winter to tell you otherwise, but that's.
I'm down there. I was down there a lot, and it's plowed, it's plowed, it's.
Yeah, but it could be the reason why you got tractor-trailers parking in there and everything else. I mean, we're accommodating all that.
Right, and I was wondering, yeah, what is, what are the various winter activities that are taking place down there? I wasn't sure, it's kind of vague. And to that point about tractor-trailers parking, do we need to require signage, no tractor-trailer parking?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know how much, I don't know if it's.
So if that's what we're concerned with, right?
It's, it's been mentioned to me more than a few times about the tractor-trailers parking, and actually, that was one of the other things we thought with these islands, is it would kind of help take away that area from, for them.
I never see it overnight. I've seen it, I've seen them stop during the day, they start.
For like a lunch break.
I don't know if it's a problem. I just, it's something that was mentioned to me a few times.
Yeah, and is it a problem, like, if there is a game over there, are they prohibiting parking during, you know, during game time, and we want our participants to be able to park easily without having to navigate around an eighteen-wheeler? So again.
I've definitely never seen that.
Right? I don't know, I'm not, not down there.
If there is, I mean, that, you know, at the end of the day, it's enforcement, and that can easily be enforced whether there's signs or not.
Okay.
But I don't, I've never heard Little League having issues with.
Easy just to throw a sign up, just to state, state the obvious, right? No tractor-trailer parking.
I don't, I don't know that it's a problem enough to bother.
It is, it is patrolled by the police. I was parked, I wasn't parked, I was sitting at the end of the boat ramp, eating my lunch. They called me and told me I can't park there, I'm not parking, I'm just eating my lunch. Well, you gotta park over there, okay, whatever you want.
Paying attention.
Yeah, so they're there.
Okay.
As far as the islands, you people think they're beautiful, sit in the front end loader and plow the snow, and they don't look that nice, believe me. If we make the other people put them in, we gotta put them in. Either that or eliminate them everywhere, which make me happy, even though I don't plow.
You don't plow anymore. Don't worry about it.
But, no, it was designed, and especially where they put it that way, and they did it, and they went out of their way to block it up by.
Well, the section, I mean, that section is already there to a certain extent. I mean, I don't know that we'd ask other people to do that. In the section, the new section, I, I don't have a reason to say we shouldn't put the islands in, but the other section, the other section I wouldn't put out, I wouldn't add.
It was existing, I got no, and you wouldn't want too many, like, at the end there where they got the straight, the people with the boat, the people who do go in there with trailers and, and the boats, sometimes their driving ability is a little shaky, so.
That's why the plan looks severe, but.
Yeah. No, I, I think it's great the way it is, though. Unless you want to eliminate everyone.
Unless you have.
It's a pleasure.
Post.
Yeah.
It's a pleasure of the board.
I make a motion, we approve the plan. I'm going to stick with subject to planting one tree in each of the new proposed islands. And, you know, I don't really have a feeling if there's room to put those trees elsewhere in the property, that's fine. If not, I'm not, I'm not going to die over it.
Could put, put some smaller.
Well, they have, I guess, I would assume that the plantings up front are going to be relatively new in the, in the new island. So, I mean, they are already putting those in, so there is some landscaping going in, so I'm, you know.
I guess what I would probably do is put the two trees up there and take some of the smaller shrubbery from there and put it.
As long as you got sight distance, you know, when you're coming out, just make sure that, you know, if you got a tree there, that's not going to start, you know, in 10 years, five years, overhanging too far. If Chuckie's okay with that, that's fine with me.
We also, we cut trees along the edge here, like up the, this, along the street line.
Back towards, back towards the condos.
So what's the, was there more trees for shrubs in the islands instead of trees?
One tree.
No, one tree, one tree in the island along, along the center line of the drive aisle.
Jamie, if you want to put your two cents worth in, go ahead.
Oh, was there a second?
Yeah, a second.
Okay.
Discussion.
I would fight for the two trees, and I would actually encourage CONCOM and Planning Board to be more, practice more oversight over municipal projects than they are prone to do on private projects. I'm glad they practice the oversight they do on private projects, but when we're doing municipal work, like at Town Park, relying on the board that's in charge of Town Park or the board that's in charge of Rosenfeld Park to have the best interest of the town is not necessarily mean that the Planning Board should also weigh in in ways that it could be better. I'm sorry that the existing repaving of this project isn't being held up to a newer, higher standard that incorporates much more landscape features. I also would definitely put the islands where the arborvitae are going and recognize that the Parks Department cut down six trees between the parking lot and the baseball diamond area fencing, and they should be replanting all of those trees. And there was historically a tree where the expanded island at the in and outside is, which is now plenty big enough to actually plant a real tree far enough back from the lines of sight. And I would hope that the Planning Board and the Parks Department get on board with more planting, but that's what I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, and end of this floor.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Unless we have something else.
Second to adjourn. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Again, end of this floor. Larry, do I have to sign some minutes?
Minutes.